Folks, we're going to call together the regular meeting of the April 10th meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission. First thing we'll do is have a call to order in a roll call.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Mattingly?
Here.
Mella?
Here.
Probes?
Here.
Rollinger?
Present.
Schrader? Stannard? And Vogel?
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening with seven members present.
I'd like you to join us with a pledge of allegiance, please, and then we'll start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item will be the approval of the minutes of the March 27th meeting. Everybody had a chance to look at those. Anybody have any corrections or changes in that? If not, we look for a motion.
Who do approve?
Second?
All those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next thing that we have on the agenda is a request into our public hearings. Before we start into that, what we'll do after I read in the record is that we will poll the Commission for Exparte Communications. This is quasi judicial, and that's, we've done that before, and we'll do that again for the record for this evening. Okay, we shall read in the record that CUP 14-002, U.S. Beef Corporation, Arby's in the Community Commercial Zone, requests for the approval of a conditional use permit for Arby's Restaurant located in the Community Commercial Zone District Lots 1 through 4, Block 9, Bird's Strum Edition, Replat, City Woodland Park, Teller County, Colorado, more specifically 407 East Highway 24. And now the question we will pose everybody is that have you had any form of exparte communication that would influence your decision here tonight?
No.
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 Okay. I had a contact by one of the people running the restaurant, and I informed him that this would possibly be exparte, but he really didn't have anything that was relevant to what we're going to discuss here tonight. I just want to make that aware. And after that, Ms. Parnell, your court.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Planning Commission for your time tonight and your valuable recommendations for City Council on our land use case this evening. Tonight, I come before you with a conditional use permit. This permit is for property located at 407 East US 24. This is for our applicant, Mr. Andy Benning, who is here with us this evening. He is the Director of Construction for U.S. Beef Corporation, Arby's, and he has assembled a more local project team. We have Grant Reed as project coordinator. We have David Langley as project architect, and we also have with us tonight Mr. Robert Kenny, who is with Transportation Solutions Engineering Incorporated. And so if you have any questions following my presentation, and any questions of staff that I can answer, they are here to answer those questions for you. Okay. My screen wavered a bit. So tonight's conditional use permit relates to our section in our zoning ordinance that talks about the table of permitted uses, and if you were to look in that table of permitted uses, we have a category for fast food restaurants with drive-in, and in the community commercial zone, that use is slated as a conditional use, and that's why we're here tonight to talk about the parameters of a conditional use permit for this project. And when we analyze a project of this nature, we have referenced several sections of our zoning ordinance. First off is our Section 18.21, which is our Community Commercial Zoning Regulations. Also in addition to that, we have Section 18.57, which relates to the conditional use permit process and parameters, as well as Section 18.33, which relates to use regulations. This slide here is a snapshot of the site at hand. This is an existing site that has currently a steakhouse as a tenant in this particular structure on this site, and this is our zoning map. So you can tell from looking at this map that approximately half of the surrounding area is commercially zoned, and the area in the violet fuchsia color is our Community Commercial Zone, and in the light blue color to the north is our Central Business District. And then, of course, the bright yellow is our urban residential zoning. Also showing you on this particular map, several of the area businesses to the north, we have Carter's Realty. To the northeast, we have Catamount Power Sports, which you've all heard a conditional use permit for recently in the last year. And then across to the east, we have the South Platte Fly Shop, and then, more importantly, in that Community Commercial Zone, to the southeast across Highway 24, we have a Sonic Drive-In, and then even further south, we have a McDonald's, but it's off this particular This is a bird's eye view of this particular site, and you'll note from this particular view that there are three surrounding street rights-of-way. To the east, we have Highway 24, and then to the north, we have Chester Avenue, and then directly to the west, we have Scott Avenue. So that does create a little bit of access opportunities for this particular lot and site. This next slide is a depiction of the site plan. You all received this also in your packets in a little bit larger drawing. Some of the things that I want to point out to you, in the black, we have our snow storage areas, and the snow storage that's provided out of the parking does meet our snow storage percentage requirement. Also shown on this particular site plan, you'll see a very light shaded color, almost white, but it has a nice texture to it of some dots, and then you'll see a gray, a light gray. The lighter area is the off-site adjacent landscaping, and then the gray area indicates the property landscaping. I'll just, I'll talk about that a little bit further into the presentation in more detail, but wanted to point that out to you at this time when we have the site plan up. Also want to point out to you the addition that is proposed for the Sonic Drive-Up Window, and that there is going to be a change through this area where there is a current median and also a patio that will now turn into an entryway, and then some additional parking, particularly the handicap parking, which is directly in front of that entrance. The handicap parking that you see here, one of those is, they're both ADA compliant, and the one to the furthest of the north is ban accessible. Let's talk a little bit further in depth with that parking requirement because it is so important. When you look at our code, the section that covers the number of parking per use that's broke out, in that code, we have a use that's overall categorized as eating and drinking place, and that further breaks out into drive-in requirements as well as eat-in requirements. And so what we did, because this particular proposed use is a combination of both, was to calculate them both and then go meet the greater of the two requirements. So I've listed here for you, the drive-in requirement would be one space for every 100 usable square foot, and the square footage of the usable spaces, approximately 2,200 square feet, so that calculates to 22 parking spaces. And in addition to that, we have four lane spaces that are required for each drive-in window. If you look at the eat-in requirement, it's one space for every four seats, and there are 56 seats that are going to be allowed in particular use, and so that would calculate to 14 parking spaces. So the greater of the two, obviously being the 22 parking spaces. Their proposal does include 24 onsite parking spaces, and they are numbered, but I want to point out to you that those two handicap accessible spaces aren't numbered, so that would basically be 23 and 24. And there are two of those handicap spaces. ADA requires one. There is one also that's ban accessible, and that's a requirement of ADA's as well. In addition to that, they have acquired an off-site leased spaces for their employees. This would be directly to the north, across Chester Avenue, at the Carter's Realty, excuse me. And right now, we have just received since the development of this staff report, that agreement, and that agreement lays out employee parking that will be marked with yellow lines and also signage to indicate that it's Arby's employee parking. It'd be leased for a price, and they have also discussed potentially five spaces, though right now we're just showing four, but just to let you know, there is that capacity to add an additional one there, too. So the total parking provided currently 28, and then we also have five lane spaces, though only four are required, and I'm showing you those right here that are around to that drive-through. Let's discuss landscaping requirement a little bit in our use requirements. It is required that there be at least 25% landscaping and improvements, and the owner and the city have previously done some landscaping improvements to this site, and they did so in a joint effort and venture, and as such, the landscaping that surrounds in the right-of-way really does blend seamlessly with what's there on the property. So staff is comfortable that we have met the landscaping requirement because of this joint venture of 25%. These are just some snapshots of the existing conditions, that steakhouse that's located there right now as a tenant. On the north side here, you can see the median landing, if you will, as well as the patio, and that will, of course, turn into that handicap parking and entryway. To the east side here, this is an east look, you can almost see the steakhouse sign here, and that's where that drive-up addition will be put on, added on. And this is the west-looking side of that location, as well as some of the south side. Over here, we have the car wash, of course, and then just one more of the south side. Now, when staff reviews a conditional use permit, where you review it to 11 criteria that are laid out for us to analyze and determine whether or not it meets those criteria, I'm going to briefly cover each one of those and then talk about how we felt that it met those requirements. Criteria number one is that it shall, the use shall demonstrate direct need to be located at the location that's being proposed, and of course, this location has been commercially zoned for over 40 years. It fits the use, and it meets the intent of the Community Commercial Zone, which is to provide a location for retail and community service office-type businesses. And it also appeals to locals to have another food option, and the surrounding area commuters that come through Woodland Park in providing us some economic. And then also, the site has had previous success in the past as a fast food drive-in service. In the 1980s, it was a Sonic Drive-In, and before that, it was the Cruisers Drive-In. So it has had this use before successfully at this location. And of course, if you look further south, across the highway to the east, there is that, the current Sonic and McDonald's in the same Community Commercial Zone doing that same food service use. So we've looked at all the impacts. We've sent out adjacent property notification letters and done all the public notification procedures, as well as we've had City Engineer and other relevant agencies review the site plan and renderings, and we feel that it can be mediated. Criteria number two is that it shall not endanger public health and welfare, and with this particular use, it will not be a substantial improvement, so it's not going to trigger a site plan review, but it will still go through a commercial development, or, excuse me, a commercial remodel and addition for that drive-in, and as such, it will be scrutinized to International Building Code as part of the building permit process, as well as fire regulations and meeting those code requirements. Criteria number three is that it will not injure the value of vicinity properties. Properties, again, to the north, the east, and the south, all commercial. There are a few residential lots that are within close proximity of this particular structure in sight to the west, however, they've been next to a use similar to this for over the last 10 years. And this particular project did acquire a review by certified residential appraiser, Mr. Michael Sperry, and he stated, and I quote, "I feel this conditional use would have a minimal effect on market value on homes close to the subject, and no effect when farther than a block from this project." Public notification process has, again, taken place, and we've only received one formal response to those that notification process, and it was supportive in nature. Criteria number four is that it shall be in harmony with the general area that it's going to be located, again, community commercial, providing that intent of use, and commercially zoned for 40 years. Criteria number five, that it shall conform to all city plans. Here, we're referencing growth plans, growth management plans, downtown redevelopment, capital improvements, transportation, utilities. And when you look at the comprehensive future plan map that's, has been undertaken with our comprehensive plan in 2010, it does meet a mixed use, which is what that slated, that area is slated for in the future, so compatible to both residential and commercial, and it does lend to the comprehensive principles of economic vitality, and also encouraging the regional area through that commuter traffic as encouraging more business in the local community. Criteria number six is that it conforms to all city regulations, and those would include building and construction, as well as engineering specifications and business regulations. Again, we're going to be taking this through a commercial zoning development review and building permit review, and so those International Building Code compliance, business licensure requirements are going to be undertaken as part of that process. The landscape requirements have been met through both onsite and off-site, meeting the improvements, and the city has had a full agency review of the current site plan and renderings that were submitted with this conditional use permit and received approval and concurrence on all accounts. Criteria number seven talks about accommodating onsite and off-site traffic that's generated, and again, we have Mr., we have Mr. Robert Kenny here. If you have any specific questions related to traffic, however, there were several trip generation letters, one that was submitted at the beginning of March, and then another one mid-March, that were included as part of your packet that described that, and those were reviewed by our City Engineer, as well as CDOT, and then also reviewed by URS. URS found that the methodology that was developed in those letters was reasonable, and since the packet was sent out, we have received approval from CDOT that the materials were acceptable that were submitted with regard to the traffic for this location. CDOT did, however, note that if the access points were to document any, create any safety hazards or operational problems, that access permits would be required, and then at that time, improvements may be necessary, and that if that should take place, there would be no cost assessed to CDOT. This has been added as a condition at the end. Parking requirements again met. Criteria number eight, talking about the topography of this use and being environmental, having environmentally significant features. This particular site is flat in nature. It's an existing site, so these are not things that are really relevant to a change in use, more relevant to a development, but there are no significant environmental impacts. Criteria number nine, having to do with providing adequate water supply, waste disposal, quality of air, protection methods, and water drainage. And this site is served with city water and sewer. Again, that commercial remodel, zoning, development, building permit process, we'll look at this a little bit further, but the Utilities Director has looked at it so far and stated that when there's an updated fixture unit count as part of that ZDP process, zoning development review process, they will check it to make sure that the capacity is met for that new use. And then he also did suggest a condition for updating the certification and verification of the existing backflow prevention device. The drainage that exists through there with this particular site is sufficient. It has an existing curb and gutter, and the air impacts will be minimal. Criteria number 10 is that the use will not unduly increase the public danger. Again, no significant safety hazards here. Commercial drive-in addition and remodel must be compliant with that permit. And lastly, criteria number 11, talks about it being required to provide architectural design schemes and amenities and any other aesthetic enhancement measures, and Mr. David Langley has done a fabulous job of providing us an enhancement upon what's already there. It's a really nice structure with, rounded with the stone at the bottom, as well as having that western mountain fill with the timbers, and that is enhanced with some additional gables windows and then the drive-through, and making it unique to market Arby's. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for a fast food restaurant in the Community Commercial Zone District located at 407 East Highway 24 and subject to the following conditions. You'll notice here that there is quite a little bit of strike-through in red. That is simply because when we sent out your staff report, those conditions were set to make sure that they were captured, and they have been met. CDOT has finalized their review, so we've reviewed A, 1A, and 1C. We were provided with the Carter Realty parking, off-site parking agreement, so we no longer need to capture those two requirements. So prior to the issuance of a zoning development permit for commercial remodel of the new fast food restaurant with drive-in food service, the applicant shall provide the following to Woodland Park Planning Department. Before occupancy, the existing backflow prevention device must be verified and tested, and certification must be up-to-date, and the results fax to the city at the number provided. The site plan and any relevant supplemental plans and studies, there will be a final signage, must be approved and reviewed as a separate zoning development permit under a permanent sign permit, and that'll be reviewed by our staff. And final lighting must be pre-approved by our staff as well prior to the installation to ensure that it is full cutoff dark sky to reduce the potential glare that it may have on the residence to the west, and it will be in accordance with Section 18.33.080.F of the code. Also added on to the end of this is a condition capturing what CDOT has provided us, in that if the access points are documented to create safety or operational problems, access permits will be required and improvements may be necessary at no cost to CDOT. Are there any questions?
What we'll do, and just for the audience's information, the next part of this will be the applicant's presentation. We'll then ask questions of both, then we'll open it up for public comment. After we get through with that, we'll close public comment, and then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, and then we'll go into debate over that. Just so you know, I didn't know if that was available back there. There is a, there really is a procedure, saying you have your opportunity to come up. So at this point, thank you.
Absolutely.
If the applicant would like to come up, identify who they are, where they're from, Mr. Langley got picked.
I'm David Langley, architect on the project and also resident of Woodland Park. Lisa has done a very fine job presenting all the cares and concerns that we've had on the project. The owners are very careful to be compliant in every part has been, they're approaching the project as a good neighbor, speaks well of them, and so really, it's just a matter of if you have any further questions, want any detailed clarifications, we're all here and available to answer to it.
Commission?
Yes, Mr. Langley. There are four parking spaces on the other side associated with Carter.
Yes.
That were designated for employees. Is that sufficient to cover the number of employees who would be there during the 12 or 13 hours that the stores open?
The parking spaces, the 22 onsite parking spaces actually meets the requirement. Those four parking spaces are in addition to the requirement and are available to the owner, and so they've just chosen to say that that is employee parking because obviously it's not convenient to the public use. So in exceeding the parking requirement, those are there. It's not necessarily correlated with the exact number of employees.
Okay, thank you.
Is there parking on the street behind the restaurant? Is that allowed? I don't know.
On Scott?
I can show you the site plan.
On Scott Avenue, yeah.
There really isn't on Scott Avenue. Is that where you're talking about?
Yeah, I was wondering if it was legal to park on Scott Avenue.
So you're talking about this right here, Scott Avenue?
Yeah.
And it does, just slightly to the south of, between the car wash and this particular site, it does veer off. I really, I don't believe that that would be, I don't even think it's allowed on that, but I can't confirm that.
Ed, one other question. Mr. Langley, to what extent do you think, and I realize you're not the project manager, will local materials or labor be used to the extent that would be appropriate for this remodel?
My understanding is that the prime candidate for the general contractor, he is from Colorado Springs, but works throughout the region on here, Foxworth-Gelbert, has been running very competitive on material supplies, so the glazing and general remodel things would be very much available here and competitive within that market, so they really wouldn't have any reason to go to any place else, and there's just not, it's not going to take a lot to this project, a little piece of it for the, it's a small addition and two raised elements at the entry location, and there's just really not a lot to it, so it's not going to be a big draw. However, the materials can be found competitively here.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, so the CDOT review, the final review of the traffic analysis that has been received?
It has. It was received as part of an email from Valerie Sword, who is in charge of the access.
And is that something that you would typically share with us?
It would be, but because it came after the packet was delivered to you, I didn't include it in your packet. I can provide you a copy if you like. I can have some copies made of that.
She sent an email out today. That was correcting just Attachment E.
That was just Attachment E. I can provide you.
My concern is just not having full access to the relevant information. Sally?
It was simply a very short email that said, "This is acceptable. We've determined this to be acceptable," and the additional comment that has been captured. So that's all it was.
Okay, and did that, was that also specifically referencing Mr. Kenny's analysis with respect to traffic?
Yes, they did say that they found the materials that were provided, the documentation that was provided by Mr. Kenny to be acceptable in that email.
Okay. And I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Kenny when the time is appropriate.
And I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Kenny when the time is appropriate.
I would say that could probably happen right now if he's available.
I'm Robert Kenny, owner of Transportation Engineering Solutions.
So in your first letter, apparently there wasn't sufficient information or the methodology you chose didn't provide a sufficiently kind of detailed result, and then you followed it up with another letter that took initially in the third paragraph, one approach, and then ended up with an approach based on sales and translating that into traffic. Could you walk through that a little bit in terms of what your approach was to determine this?
The initial letter was basically just an overview. It wasn't known how much detail was needed at the time, and it was thought that just a rough overview would be all that would be needed. And then I believe that the city engineer requested additional information. So once we got the word that we had to look at it more in depth, the first thing I did, I've worked with the ITE for many, many years, and when you've got data that gives such a huge range, it could be anywhere from, I think it was like 30 to 150 or something for its generation rate, that usually raises a flag for me. And so I used to work for the City of Colorado Springs and also for Douglas County reviewing these types of studies. And so I really wanted to get more in depth, so I actually spent some time at an Arby's in Colorado Springs. It was right next door to another fast food restaurant. And I also dug a little bit deeper into the trip generation studies themselves, and I found that to average out every type of restaurant, Quiznos for instance versus Arby's or versus McDonald's, obviously they don't all generate the same amount of traffic. One of them is going to be much, much busier than the other one. So I looked for a way of trying to quantify just how much traffic each one of those would create, again, because it was such a huge range given in the ITE manual. And so I, as a previous restaurant owner quite a few years ago, I was aware of the fact that you can find data that has to do with the amount of sales per unit, per year. And my feeling is that if you've got a Dairy Queen that is doing $400,000 worth versus a Chick-fil-A that's doing $3 million, obviously the Chick-fil-A is going to create a lot more traffic than the Dairy Queen. And so what I did was I went through the most recent analysis done by the trade journalists for the restaurant industry, and it, in that you can find the actual average cost per, or average income per unit, or average sales per unit. And I used all of those for the top 20 restaurants that have drive-ups and used that as a modifying factor. For instance, if I was looking at a McDonald's, I would use higher than average because they have higher than average sales. If I was looking at, I don't want to pick on Quiznos, hopefully nobody in here owns a Quiznos, but if I was looking at Quiznos, I would use a much lower number. So I would use that sales as a way of trying to quantify where within that range of ITE averages, this particular use should fall.
Okay. And in your summary of the second letter dated March 10th, you indicate Arby's will generate significantly more trips, trip ends than the current use. And then the sentence that kind of caught my eye is the ADT generated is less important than the actual peak hour volumes, which must be distributed to the existing access points and streets, and the peak hour volumes calculated will not cause significant congestion. So significant congestion, you know, that's obviously a qualifier.
Right.
So there will be some congestion. It won't generate significant, I'm just concerned that all of this data and analysis ends up with a kind of rhetorical or descriptive versus analytical conclusion.
And sometimes I may tend to get a little too in-depth, but the reason the ADT is not as important is because that's the average daily traffic. So if you have a business or a residential use or any kind of a use, if it's open for 18 or 20 hours and it gets 10 trips per hour, it's going to have 180, but 10 trips is nothing. It's still 180 trips. But if the business was only open one hour and still got 180, you'd have congestion because they'd all been trying to get there at the same time. That's what I was referring to as far as the ADT. It's not normally anything that people get too concerned about. The CDOT driveway permits for instance are not based on ADT. They're based on peak out. So what you need to look at is what is the highest peak hour of use. In this case, you have an Arby's that is open for 12 to 13 hours. They're going to have traffic coming and going all day, but not at a really high rate. The existing restaurant, which was only open for about, I think, four hours or so, all of their customers come and go within just about a two-hour period. So the actual peak hour of the existing restaurant is just as much traffic as the peak hour at Arby's in the afternoon, and that's what I was looking at. That's what I was trying to refer to here, is that although the new use, Arby's will generate more trips in a whole day, within the one hour that the existing restaurant is busy right now, Arby's will generate virtually the same amount of traffic.
And so the qualifier will not cause significant congestion. There will be some congestion, but it won't be significant in order to cause any other downstream problems. Is that?
That's correct. They'll virtually not see an increase in traffic congestion over what's there now because again, that peak hour is about the same. To give you an idea, and I don't think it's in your packet, but it was in the information I gave to the city engineer, the right-in, right-out driveway that's right in front of their house, I'm sorry, in front of their building, is looking at having four vehicles per hour going in and out of there. Most of them are going to be turning on the public street and coming in that other driveway. There's no way that four vehicles would be considered any kind of congestion problem on the state highway.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
When I'm looking at the layout of this, you're going to try to have the majority of the traffic come from 24 to Chester and then come in through that way into the property?
Yeah, that's, that's actually, it's not that we're trying to do that, it's just human nature. There's been, there's been a lot of studies at, for instance, at shopping centers that have two or three driveways. Typically, the great majority of customers use the first driveway.
Okay.
And so most of the ITE studies show that at least 80% of the traffic will take the first turn to get into a use. The other 20% that miss the first turn will take the second turn. So the great majority of people will be turning out the city street at Chester and then going in that way. That's also the easiest way to get to the drive-up. If you come in off of the right-in, right-out driveway, you have to circle clear around the building and come back again to get to the drive-up, and that's really not very convenient.
Because there is another entrance exit off of Scott Avenue, and then there's also another entrance or exit on 24 from the side, the backside of the building. And that gets pretty congested there with the car wash.
Yeah, and again, I think that once people turn on Chester, there's going to be, and I went over this with David before on where his signage is going to be, there'll be a sign right there that says "Drive up" at that location. I think that, again, that's the first way in once you get on Chester. Human nature is such that people tend to take the first access. And so I believe that you're going to find that, actually my projections show about 17 to 18 vehicles will be turning right on Chester and then turning left and going into that driveway.
Okay, and then once they're leaving the establishment and they come back up Chester to 24, how much detailed information did you get from the traffic across the highway? Not so much with the new sports, the motorsport place, but Papa Murphy's and the liquor store. I mean, that gets pretty bottled up there in the evenings.
Yeah. One of the things that has been studied quite extensively are drive-up windows, restaurants with drive-up windows. The Traffic Engineers Association and ITE have really spent a lot of time on that because that causes a lot of problems in some locations. Most of the restaurants, Arby's, McDonald's, Sonic, most of them, really get most of their traffic from what's called pass-by or vehicles that are already on State Highway 24. So you're not seeing a lot of the draw coming from the neighborhoods to the east across 24. You're really looking at almost all of the traffic coming and going from Arby's is going to be off of the state highway.
So you're saying that the majority of the traffic coming out are going to be going, be turning right instead of turning left going on through Woodland Park?
If it's, if it's pass-by traffic, for instance, we go up to Buena Vista quite often on weekends, and we go up into the collegiate range and so forth, so when we come back, it's late after noon, if we're coming by and looking for a restaurant, we're going east, we're going, I live in Colorado Springs, we would turn in, go into the Arby's, and then go back out the driveway on 24, the right-in, right-out, and keep going east if, or south, I guess, always get turned on 24. But if the traffic is pass-by type traffic, it's coming from the northwest, it's going to go in and then continue on the same path that they were going. It's not likely that you're going to have a significant number of people coming in and then going back out and going back to the northwest, at least not the pass-by type traffic. Local residents will do that, but local residents will actually probably be a minority as far as the total customers.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One, how, how do you account for seasonal traffic in your studies? We get, I mean, you get a lot more traffic in the summer here than we do in the winter, and already we have a lot of backups on weekends particularly. And I'm concerned, so that's one question. The second question is, is the adequacy of the turn lane going east, I mean, excuse me, going west on 24, turning onto Chester Avenue? Is that adequate in a rush hour kind of thing to avoid congestion there? Are there enough spaces on that, or did you even look at that?
Yeah, I did look at that. For one thing, the state requires us to look at an average weekday. So the report is done for an average weekday, and you don't really take into account weekends or seasonal variation. But yeah, I'm familiar with this area, and I know what you mean. Sunday afternoon especially, in the summertime, gets really busy, and it's.
And Friday afternoons.
Yeah, it's mostly going back towards Colorado Springs. In this case, if the median were not already out on 24, that's probably one of the things the state would like to see, would be so people don't try to turn left into the, into the driveway right in front of Arby's, but instead go up to the intersection where there's a left turn lane. But that median forcing that driveway to be a right-in, right-out is actually a really good thing as far as traffic is concerned. Again, if they're coming from the northwest and they go in Chester, once they're done eating or go through the drive-up, they're going to want to continue going southeast, and so they'll come out that driveway where the median is blocking any other move. They can come out that, it's a right-out, and proceed on downhill. So that'll actually make that much safer than if there was no median there.
We talk a lot about coming from the west, but there's an awful lot of traffic that goes, goes from, you know, is heading west from the east, and that's, I guess that's my concern. I mean, even, even now, when you're trying to get to businesses heading east on the left-hand side, you can have quite a bit of wait, given the traffic coming from the west, and particularly in the summertime. So my thought is, is that, and my question is, is, you know, will there be a capacity or are we looking at a lane blockage or backup on the, on the westbound, left lane of the westbound 24?
I don't believe so. I did do an analysis of that, and it came up that the maximum would be nine vehicles turning in a one-hour period. So if you stop and think about that, that's.
Can you make money doing that?
That's one vehicle about every five minutes.
Huh? No, well, can you?
Well, nine, nine in an hour is not a whole lot, quite frankly. I mean, you know, if you figure 60 minutes, you know, you've got one about every, every five, every six minutes trying to make that left. So with any kind of break, and I know what the flow rates are there, I agree with you, it gets a little busy there, but that gives you four to five-minute wait for a gap in traffic for each vehicle without causing any backup.
Was, was any study done of traffic going down Scott to Sheridan?
No, and honestly, the reason I didn't do that was because, again, all of the studies that I've seen within, within ITE are showing that, and it's been studied throughout the United States, that the great majority of customers for this type of restaurant is really highway traffic. If you took this restaurant and put it four blocks away from 24, I'm afraid they would have a hard time staying in business. I mean, it's just realistic. They, they feed off of the highway. And the only people that know about those backways, I didn't know about it until I saw it on Google Earth, quite frankly, are the local residents. Really? I mean, I have friends that live up here and they, yeah, and they tell me how to get from one place to town, and I'm always surprised that there's even ways of getting any place other than Highway 24 because I use 24 for everything.
Okay.
I think, again, going back to the peak hour of this use is about, is virtually the same as the peak hour of the existing restaurant, so I guess I'd have to say that the existing restaurant, which is used almost all by locals, is probably putting a lot more traffic on those local streets than this will.
A lot of the people coming home at night from the Springs will turn on Sheridan. They'll turn there by People's Bank. And if I was coming in, I think I'd turn there and then go up along Scott and come in in that entrance down there at that one end because you'd be right lined up with the drive-through. So you'll be able to offset some of that congestion, the potential congestion down there because I lived in that area for a long time, and that's the shortcut that a lot of people coming to, live in that area, cut over there before they get to light a McDonald's, and either go over to Woodland or they take the back way to get over to West Street or that kind of stuff. Because when Cruisers was there, which was the late 90s, and I was there in the late 90s, that drive-in was no more busy than I think you're going to see it now. Some people would go down that road, but there's a whole bunch of different ways to get in and get out of that. The only problem that I see by looking at this plan is that if you have more than five cars backed up in the drive-through, and you have a snow area on that one side, I don't know if there's enough room for the people exiting the dining area to get out on Chester if there's more than five cars lined up in that drive-through because they're going to block that exit over there where you, where that, where you exit out on this end of the building. I don't know what the dimensions are there, whether a car can get by if that radius is filled with cars like there will be at times, just like McDonald's or anyplace else. So five is an average number, but it's not the magic number. If you get six or seven, I don't know how much you've allowed for cars to get around it that are coming out of the dining, dining area.
I don't, honestly, I don't really have the site plan in front of me, but I'm guessing that that area is what, about 19 feet or so? So it would be pretty tight to get out around them. You could probably have a sixth one sticking out there and still make it around. More than that, it would probably be a delay.
They want to cut that snow area back a little bit so that a car can get around there and get out that exit if it's, if that radius continues around the building. Generally, that'll happen, especially at peak times.
Or out onto the street possibly too, if they're coming in off of Chester.
That's the other thing, they may go down that other street to, to go in.
Yeah. People that live in the area know how to get there.
Right.
Without getting on a highway.
Those of us that don't have a clue on where all the other little streets are.
Sally, where is the traffic from the new apartments? Where are they having the entrance into those apartments? Is it going to be on Sheridan or?
The primary access point is off of Sheridan, and due to the apartments, there's a requirement for a dedicated D cell lane on Highway 24 going eastbound that will be in, be constructed this spring to accommodate that. But then they also have a secondary access into the Safeway Shopping Center, so they have to. have two access points.
Because that is going to throw more traffic onto Sheridan and probably Scott if they know enough about town, the town to get around.
Woodland Avenue, Fairview. Those local streets will all absorb quite a bit of more traffic from these developments.
D cell lane will help you too, that'll alleviate any kind of congestion down there.
For the apartments, yeah. And, well, well, the thing about an apartment, again, is people all come home from work about the same time, you've got that big peak hour happening all at once, and, you know, you can, a, a public street, or even a private street, can accommodate a lot of traffic if it's spread out. If it happens all at once, that's when you run into a problem. And that typically happens at residential, because everybody's leaving to go to work at the same time, and everybody's coming home at the same time. But a shopping center, for instance, has traffic all day and doesn't have such a defined peak.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll now open the public comment section of this, of this procedure. We have a list of sign-ups, and the first one on the list is Jim White of Dallas Alley. You might let us know where Dallas Alley is, I know, but some of these folks here might not.
Dallas Alley is, uh... Right here. Sheridan.
Scott Avenue, she's off, just Scott.
Jim White, I've been a resident in Tella County for twenty years now, nineteen at this resident here. When you talk about my concerns, one was parking, but it seems like they may have that under control. Couple of concerns mine, high school students, lunchtime. Getting across Highway twenty-four right there to go eat, what are we going to do to protect our children? We do have a crosswalk right here. Like I said, I've been here nineteen years. It doesn't work very well, if y'all don't know that, I can tell you firsthand. Hardly anybody stops there. I personally have two teenagers, fifteen and eighteen, right now, that live with me at the house, in the time that we've, they were born and came home to this house. So that concerns me about our children crossing that safely, obviously. And also, we just kind of mentioned there at the end, we have a hundred and sixty-eight units going up at the end of our street. Happy about that. Wish I'd have known furthermore in detail about that, you guys would have met me a lot sooner, but at any rate, that's already said and gone. Question I do have is, I've seen on their website, it looks like, and you just mentioned that there's an entrance-exit in the Auto Zone, there's a oil change place, I can't figure the name of it right now. Is that open constantly, or is that just an emergency type thing? So we have an in and out, two places. Well, that is definitely good news, because with a hundred and sixty-eight units, we're looking at at least a hundred and sixty-eight people, up to probably three, four hundred, dumped to the south of us. What I know about this neighborhood is, and I could be incorrect, but Foster's Edition, first two homes went up, I believe, in nineteen thirty-five. Mine personally was built in nineteen fifty-two, and we're going to have, I've been there nineteen years, and I know the impact that these gentlemen are talking about in our neighborhood is completely wrong, because we already have impact going on right now without even the residents of the, the apartment building being open yet. As an example, I know on Saturdays and Sundays, if I want to go, and as long as I've been here, I'm a little still confused with north, southeast, west as well, so bear with me, west, if we want to go north into town from where I'm at, I typically would go down Dallas Alley, make a right on Chester, and then go left. Saturdays and Sundays, I know better, I don't even think about that, because the traffic's horrible and would be there forever. So these guys are going to introduce us to having a line of traffic on twenty-four once coming in. Because like this gentleman said, unless they go down here and then go up Scott Street, the back way, so it will impact that neighborhood. Now, for us to get out, oh, these people down here, these hundred and sixty-eight to three hundred people are going to learn really quick, when they want to go west into town, they're going to do the same thing. So now we're going to have this insurgent of these apartments down here going like this. Very quiet neighborhood, by the way, very, very quiet, and we love that there. We have a very tight neighborhood, I have some of my neighbors here with me. So there's going to be an impact as far as their traffic goes, and I, 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 we need, we need Arby's up here like we needed them in two thousand, two thousand ones, I think we lasted a year, if we're not mistaken, before they bailed on us. No really nutritional value for us as far as food goes. This gentleman has a fine dining establishment restaurant that I really don't even know is there, I'll be honest with you. His customers, his clients, don't impact us at all. I met him back, way back when it was Cruisers, when I moved in, it was actually Cruisers there, it was a fun family atmosphere thing, I used to take my boys up there and see the cars and all that stuff, and I am in the car business. I don't know, quite frankly, if I'd even be satisfied with blocking this off, blocking this off because eighty percent of our traffic is going to come in here? Well, I can't get out this way, and now you're telling me I'm going to have to wait over here to get out this way. So as a resident of nineteen years, I ask you guys, do I need to come out this way and then go all the way down to Safeway to get out on twenty-four? Because I don't think that's fair to us in the neighborhood. So why don't we do this, if you guys want to argue, why don't we open it up here, and you can come in here, and you can exit here, and it does nothing to us, to our neighborhood? So the traffic is a major thing for me, the children going there eating, crossing Highway twenty-four, when, my goodness, like I said earlier, that crosswalk does not work. Nobody ever stops there. People walk across it when the traffic stops. And I thank you guys for your questions as well about the traffic impact. Thank you.
Jim, one of the things I think that happens, because I lived, I, I worked in that area for a long time, I had the carlet on the corner before the bank, Alpine Out of Center.
I thought you lived from there, I spoke to you years ago.
And what happened was, when, when the hundred and sixty-eight units went in, okay, and I, at that point in time, we had a lot of questions about that. The only people that were concerned were the people on Sheridan Ave, down at the end, where the entrances on the other side of, of where they, where they sealed off the east, east part of Fountain, whatever. Anyway, they were concerned about blocking their, 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 their view to the peak. The first three or four or five, the clubhouse and all that were made one, two stories or one story instead of three. But that's where everybody will go. They will go over to Woodland Ave, and they'll go up to the light at Fairview to get out. And if I was in that area, that's the way I would go. They're not going to come in your quiet area down there. I think a lot of people will, there'll be increased traffic over on Woodland Ave, just like they do now. And I think that's where a lot of, a lot of folks will go, because that's a shortcut everybody takes when it gets busy, like you said.
And that's the way I go, up that way, and then make a left by Beer Works, which by the way-
Exactly, exactly.
There isn't any room there either, because now the parking is all the way down there, so everybody's doing this, trying not to hit each other, you know? So our streets here, if, if none of you guys are aware, if none of you guys are aware, these streets aren't even streets, okay? They're half streets. So they're, they're not even a full street, so if there's two cars coming, you know, and it's not a very busy neighborhood anyways. I mean, honestly, when someone comes down the street, we're all like, who's that? Because it's just a quiet street. And no matter what anybody says, it's going to impact us, there's no doubt about it.
Where you're at on Dallas Alley, I think you have the least amount of impact, you're quiet back there. More so than the other streets.
I disagree, I've been nineteen years, and I see people flying up and down the street by the park back there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Shelley Baskin.
Actually, you guys have covered everything, and he's covered a lot, so-
Okay, fine, I just wanted to give you your chance. Okay, Ken Garland.
Ken Garland, I've been four twenty-sixth Spruce Street, which is, I'm just diagonal to the restaurant now. Been there twenty years, twenty-plus years. It was all dirt road when I moved in, seen a lot of changes, not really. Progress is progress to some people, not everybody, winners and losers and everything. But I just have a question with the traffic. I have a big concern, my bedroom's on this side of the house. I'm going to have headlights flashing in my bedroom all night. They're saying that the main traffic's going to come, turn, come down this way. It's a congested alley, not an alley, but a driveway, coming through here, it's congested with snow. They're saying the cars are going to come in here, go through the driveway, and exit out here, they're going to circle back around through the congested area and use the right turn out here as an exit. I don't see, if that's going to be counted as an exit, you're adding extra congestion coming back down here as the staging lane for the drive-thru. It's going to, I just don't see this being used as an exit a lot. But something on Scott Street here, it's my neighbor's house, uh, this is, let's say, it used to be a dirt road, it's just basically a single-lane road. The drainage on this side of the road actually goes into this yard. Many years ago, after the city paved the road, there's no curb and gutter on this side of the street. Water's going straight into Ms. Cale's yard, straight into her house. The city put up a no parking sign right there in front of her house to stop people from parking and breaking the makeshift curbs that were put in there. I don't believe that sign's there anymore, but that was originally no parking on that side of the street, which is a very narrow street anyhow, they're not allowed to park there, you know, it's just those- Have a question about the lease over here, on how long's that lease for? What happens when Carter sells? What happens when, how long's lease for, that you're going to have those four spots to meet requirements? Next year, the lease goes away, don't meet requirements, all okay?
You'll, you'll get your chance, you'll get your chance to rebut as soon as the comments are done.
Well, I, I have a real concern with the headlights, obviously, understandable, right into my yard. I really don't, not interested in every night when I'm laying in bed or trying to watch TV here and, welcome to Arby's, what can we get for you tonight? I'd like to know what you have planned. Would you stop the headlights, stop the sound from coming to my house? Believe me, Sonic's right here.
Mr. Garland, could you address the planning commission, please?
Okay, I'm sorry? But I have concerns with the sound, and I know with Sonic, it's across the highway from me, you can't stop the sound all the time. I hear, quite often, I hear the music, I hear the, you know, welcome to Sonic, I hear it. Just like to know what's planned so that I don't hear it.
Where, where is your house in relationship to that driveway?
My roof right here.
Okay, are you by the car wash?
I'm directly across the car wash.
And the lights coming out of that don't bother you at night?
Oh, surely they bother. The car wash was there when I moved in, over twenty years ago.
Okay.
I accept that.
All right.
Right now, we have a change going on here, but I have an opportunity to voice my opinion.
Oh, sure you do.
And so that's what I, I have a concern here before we accept the change. And I just have some things that I'd like to address, how is it going to impact me positively? I don't know anybody personally that's going to benefit positively from this. If it's not going to affect me positively, or anybody I know, I can't be for it. And I realize it was said a little bit ago, as being a minority, being one of the few residents right there. It's great thinking of being a minority, but how's this going to affect me? If you can make me feel that it's going to affect me positively, I'll be for it. But I don't know as if you can do that. Those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that hasn't had a chance to speak, that didn't get a chance to sign up? How's your opportunity? We normally don't do this, but come on up and do it. That's fine, just your name and the address.
My name's Pam Streck, and I live in Westwood Lakes, across from the hospital. And I guess my concern, I, I like the, the positive impact, I guess I'm looking at Woodland Park and where, what kind of community we want to be. We have a significant number of fast food restaurants already. I mean, I feel like we are saturated with that, so we introduce another one into the community, how do we benefit? I mean, instead of having six or seven who has the number of fast food restaurants, now we have, I mean, are we going to actually bring more business to our community? Or are we just going to chop it into, oh, well, instead of going here today, I'm going to go there? It's the same amount of money, I think, that we'll be bringing into the community. People, I mean, you'll just slice it up more ways. So I guess that's my concern, is what, do we just want to be that drive-through community? Is that what we are? Everybody drives through, oh, I recognize McDonald's, I recognize, and, and then they go on their way? Or do we want to have a place more like the steakhouse that draws in, you know, that is a, a destination, that brings in a different type of people? So that's, that's my comment, is studies they've gone through and they, you know, here's the building, here's this, I mean, say we do meet all of those things, did you look at, when you did a study, what kind of business do you expect to get? Target numbers, we expect so many people driving through. I mean, we can say nine customers an hour, nine people coming into that in an hour, but the high school traffic, we all know that's different. Those high school kids have thirty minutes. There's going to be nine, I mean, they'll be right there, and they've got to get in and out, are they walking, driving? It's hard, I mean, if, if you guys have driven into the restaurant right now, it's hard to access that. I mean, there's, we're talking about all these ways in and out. I mean, if you are coming up and going past or through, you never take a left onto that, you just couldn't do it. I mean, you, you'll say, okay, I'll catch it on the way back, maybe. I'll catch it when I'm going back down the Springs. But I just think you'll, you'll see lots of bottlenecks. I say, get out there and try it if you haven't, and you'll see that that's going to be a difficult situation. So anyway, that's my question, or statement, whatever, is where does Woodland Park want to go? Do we just want to pay another fast food one, and did it really bring anything to the community or not? Question mark. Are you, I mean, is, are we set up to be successful? Lots of restaurants, lots of businesses have come and gone. Why? I mean, why is that? Why do you think you're going to be different? Are you going to knock out somebody else? Or are you just, just taking a chip of their business away? So, I mean, that's a question. When you set up as a business, you want to be successful, you, I mean, you're setting it up to make good money. Can you do that in this community? I don't know, so, the end.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Anybody else? Okay.
Is Michael De Sperry here, the certified residential appraiser? Is he here this evening?
No.
On the bottom of his letter, it says, I feel this conditional use would have minimal, minimal effect on the market value of homes close to the subject, and no effect further than a block from his project. Well, I disagree with that, because if I've got three hundred, two hundred, three hundred people down here and I can't get to my house this way, and I got to drive in, pull the traffic going eighty percent going in and out this way, and when I'm selling my house and they, people ask me about the impact, and I have to tell them they have to go down to Woodland and go down to Safeway to get on Highway twenty-four, that does have an impact on the value of our homes in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we will close the public comment. At this point, we'll look for rebuttal from the applicant, if there's anything you'd like to address. You don't have to, but we're just giving you your opportunity.
Hi, I'm Andy Bidding, and I'm from Tulsa, and I'm, I'm here with the company. We're USB for, we're the largest Arby's franchisee in the country. We have three hundred and twenty-five stores, and we're, have just recently come into the Colorado market, and, and Denver and Colorado Springs both, so we're, we, we see Woodland Park as positive, and so we're coming out here to the restaurant in your community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you know why, and I wasn't in Woodland Park when there, the Arby's was in town, but why that particular site didn't-
That, I don't know anything about, that was a different franchisee. So I don't know-
Just kind of curious.
-anything about, we bought out the franchisees previously.
What, what would you consider your average price for a meal?
Close, close to nine dollars.
Okay, because one of the reasons the original Arby's didn't make it in that location, they depended on the high school kids. High school kids don't have nine dollars for a meal.
And, and we have, we have value menu items, but we don't, uh, we don't, we're, we're not really looking for the high school trade for lunch. It's a bonus if we get it, but that's not really what we're looking for. But we have, you know, dollar ninety-nine items, things like, that a lot of kids buy.
With respect to, uh, one of the comments on light, and, uh, is there anything that could be done to mitigate that? With a reasonable modification to the plan?
Uh, sure. I mean, I, I don't have any objection at all at this, where the parking is right here, we could put up a, a privacy fence of some sort, or something to stop the light from coming through.
Could we make that conditional, or how would we proceed?
I would want to look at that before.
Or we could do landscaping, I mean, whichever.
Sure.
I mean, to, um, because fencing is not one of our favorite things. Landscaping would be better, would be, you know, but it, it may be better for the, um, property owner to erect a fence near his house to, um, prevent the light in. So it's, it's hard to say that that would be, um, a, an appropriate choice right now, but I think we could work, it sounds like we could work with the applicant and the property owner to.
You can use, you can use cutoff lighting that shines towards. Not towards, not towards, back towards the folks. Far more aesthetically pleasing than a six-foot privacy fence.
I would be comfortable with a condition that we work with the applicant and the property owner.
Would that not help with the sound as well from the speakers?
No.
No.
The speakers around.
Speakers are on the other side.
Speaker will be right over here on this side of the building.
It's on the other side.
Projecting out this way.
Okay.
The voice of the speaker will be, the voice.
Towards the highway.
Believe me, I, I've heard Sonic since the day it happened. It's just a problem.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Um, the no parking signs. Sally, or, or does anybody know if they actually exist on there today? Or is that something that we could consider? I, I have a concern with people parking, 'cause it is a narrow street. I didn't really think of the other side of the street that was mentioned, but I was thinking it were backed up, or, you know, a rush of high school kids or whatever, and they're parking on streets because it, I mean, because the line's backed up on the drive-through, there's all kinds of options I've seen. You know, I've been around drive-through places that get busy and concerned.
I've loved that street for ten years, there's no parking, people don't park on that street.
Well, not yet. I don't know.
And didn't, when there was a drive-in there before?
Okay.
The plant, the public works director did not make a comment associated with drainage or with the parking, but we can go back to him and have him take a look at that a little bit more closely.
Just to follow up on the, uh, concern about pedestrian traffic at that intersection. Um, I concur with the conclusion, which, uh, again, doesn't take rocket science. There are many places on twenty-four which are dangerous to cross. Uh, the state law signs have done something to slow people down, but not a lot. Could anything be done, I mean, there is a concern about an increased foot traffic. Can anything be done to increase the profile of public safety for that intersection, pedestrian traffic?
One thing that the city is looking at doing is working with CDOT to lower the speed limit. So, uh, I'm not sure if that could extend down into this area as well, but we can certainly throw out some ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Prior to the way it is now, Phil, there was no sidewalk there.
No, I know.
And all the kids had to walk in the curbs on twenty-four. And then finally, that whole sidewalk was put from Chester down to, uh, the next street. Yeah, it's all through, before, prior to that, the kids took their life in their hands trying to cross. That's a wide street to go across. That's a real long, wide there. But that's thirty-five miles an hour when you get down to that end, it's actually forty-five before that. And that's what Sally talked about, we're trying to figure out a way to lower that. But there's a procedure you have to do with CDOT to get that done. And that's, that's always been a problem there. Always, but it was far worse before that sidewalk was put in.
Aren't we looking at kind of an expansion of the ki, uh, core downtown business area? When we look at something like this on this side, on the south side of twenty-four, that might warrant one of those intersections like we have, uh, at the Cowhand? Where you have a pedestrian light and, and, uh, and, and flags and, and something like that for, because I can see a lot, significant increase across, you know, crossing twenty-four, uh, as we, as we build up that side of the highway.
Right, and as you know, we're looking at a traffic circulation study that will be kicked off this year, and just north of this block is Pike's Peak Avenue. Pike's Peak Avenue currently does not punch out to Highway twenty-four, and at one point in time, the access control plan called for a traffic signal at Pike's Peak. So punching that out and putting a traffic signal in is all other, um, traffic improvements that will be looked at as far as a, uh, this next upcoming traffic.
I don't know that a light is necessary, except, uh, you know, maybe a very significant crossing pattern there.
Pike's Peak is the area.
And that sort of thing that warrants, uh, traffic. Just people, you know, when they, when you hit the thirty-five mile an hour sign coming into town, uh, from the, uh, from the east, uh, not very many people pay attention to that thirty-five mile an hour sign. And there, and that's, that's around Sonic and, and all the other places. Now, we're talking about people perhaps crossing the highway to get to a restaurant on this side, fast food restaurant, and it seems to me that might warrant some more significant thought about crossing.
Pike's Peak Avenue comes out just, just past the dinosaur museum. And, and that's gonna, that, that can potentially be an artery that goes behind, uh, the trailer car court, and that can become a corridor for an alternate, uh, place for traffic to get off of downtown.
As far as foot traffic, no matter what we do, if we put a red light up, or, or put a cross again near McDonald's, where the light already exists, our children are not gonna, not go to this crosswalk. As an option, I have seen in, in cities before, you can put, um, poles on each side to where you hit it to cross, and I think there might be one in front of, uh.
We've got, we've got those.
Tristam razor or something?
Yeah, and that's what I think he was referring to.
But, also, they have them where you actually have lighting going all the way across the crosswalk. When I hit that button to go across the street to go to Arby's, it's lit up all over the road flashing, and that grabs every, that grabs a driver's attention just like that, daytime or nighttime. That might be an option as well.
One of the things that's an advantage is that, remember, you have a closed campus at the high school for freshmen. They're not allowed to come out for lunch. So it's really predominantly for the kids that are upperclassmen. Most of those kids got wheels, for the most part. But the freshmen can't, can't, don't go out anyway. Or they're not supposed to. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any final questions for anybody? Okay. That's the case, then. Among ourselves, are there any questions? Any observations, any comments?
So what, um, what are we adding as a, what's, what's the proper term, Sally, help me?
A wanted condition.
We're gonna, what are we gonna add as a condition?
To work.
Just to work with.
Work with the, um, resident.
Work with the applicant and the property owner to see if there's a solution to address headlights.
The measure of that. What's the description for it?
Well, I would just, just to throw in there, just work in good faith. And, you know, given my knowledge of how things work here, if they say work in good faith, they will, they will do that. I can, I continue to have a concern about that intersection with respect to pedestrian safety, and the, um, the state law lights that flash up further up might be a, a nearer-term accommodation for that, that at least would be examined. And I appreciate the comments that folks have made about traffic and quality of life in the area, so thank you for that.
One of the problems that we just had in the review that we just took place about Woodland Park is that, that our enemy is Highway twenty-four. Um, and that's no easy thing to fix, because it's a federal highway, as well as involved with state control. And, uh, the saving grace from this is this all goes before the city council, and you get to get up there and talk to them as well. The same, the same, um, uh, public hearing will take place, you can come back and voice those same concerns that you have during the public hearing session of the council. The council will do it in two forms. The first one is just putting it on the agenda, nothing will take place at that point, except putting it on the, uh, the first reading, and the second reading, there will be another public hearing just like there's been here tonight. And you'll have your opportunity to go and talk to them about those same concerns. I agree with you with the pedestrian, that's a real dilemma trying to get across that highway, 'cause it's so wide. And even that one downtown's got the flashing lights. I've watched cars go right through there when they're flashing red. They don't even slow down, you take your life in your own hands trying to get across there. And it's even wider there. That's a problem. I don't know if that's Arby's problem, I think that's a problem as a city we have to address for anybody going across there, whether they're going home, or wherever they're going. That should be addressed, irrespective of that.
Uh, Sally, can the city, uh, on its own, uh, improve, uh, the crosswalk, the lighting, et cetera, et cetera? Or does that require CDOT approval? No.
Absolutely, it requires CDOT's approval, it's their road, so they have to buy into the upgrades.
Based on your experience, uh, with them, would we, would be, would we be likely to, uh, receive approval to, uh, increase the safety factor there? Or, you know, is it a fifty-fifty shot, or?
We have a very good relationship with CDOT, but they have a set of standards that trigger various warrants for different improvements, so it's hard to say. But we do have a very good relationship.
Okay, thank you.
We're, when we're, we're asking CDOT for a twenty mile an hour speed limit, or is it twenty-five? Twenty-five? Where is that going to start?
I don't have the specifics in mind, I think those negotiations.
It won't do any good if it starts, to me, if it starts, uh, where, where the thirty mile starts now. Like I said, because we've expanded down, down the highway.
I would think.
Terms of business.
I mean, I'm downtown, it says thirty, they go through there at forty-five, so. Drag racing.
But that's, uh, the police need to be more visible there. I guess my comment is, is that we're here as the planning commission to determine whether or not.
Correct.
They comply, you know, this proposal complies with, uh, our requirements, with the city requirements for a conditional use permit. In my view, it does. So, I, I guess I recommend approving it, with the condition that they, we do work with the, the owner to make it more user-friendly for the, uh, for the neighbors. And I think we can do that. Uh, the other thing I think we'll have, the other, crosswalk, I think we'll have to address in another, another forum.
I concur, I think, um, yeah, it beats all the requirements, and, uh, with the condition, I think that's a good condition. Good conversation, we, we always learn something new in these meetings, so I appreciate the, the residents coming out and sharing about the neighborhood in general, and the crosswalk is a great, um, topic for some more discussion for the city, so I appreciate that.
I heard Jeff making a motion, do I hear you second it with those conditions?
I'll second.
I didn't know I was making a motion.
It sounded like one to me.
Sure did.
Okay.
When we have discussion, good things come out of that. And what's come out of this is improvements for our city, for your children, no matter what happens and is built there. And that's the good thing that comes out of this. What you call the question?
DeVoe?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Probst?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Hi.
And Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. As Mr. DeVoe said, this case will move forward to the city council's agenda. The first meeting, our first reading is next Thursday, the seventeenth, but that's just the first reading, there's no public comment at that meeting. The public hearing will be set for May first.
And thank you for coming, thank you. We shall move on.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. We're looking for reports. I have none. Sally?
The only report I have is on your, uh, desk, is the March two thousand and fourteen monthly report. And we highlighted the passage of the accessory dwelling units with our introduction, uh, that council achieved last month with your hard work and pulling that together. Um, also, we had, uh, a fairly busy building department month. We had, uh, forty-five building permits issued, but the most significant number on this, uh, chart is that, uh, we have seen, year-to-date, almost thirteen million dollars worth of new construction in town. And that is mostly due to Trail Ridge Apartments. So we issued the last three buildings, um, last month, and that gave us, uh, a chunk of money coming in for evaluation. So, uh, we also had a hundred and twenty-five inspections throughout the month of March. So, regional building department is, uh, pretty busy with us, and they're very happy.
Excellent, good. Anybody else have a report as far as you?
You know, that apartment complex will bring out far more need for crossing Highway twenty-four with a hundred and sixty-eight units and the children and everything that will be there. And at some point in time, they're gonna have to figure out a way to solve that. This, you know, the tragedy, if somebody will get, will get injured out there. Because there's just so many more people that will be in that corridor. Far more than what Arby's will bring, with all the apartments in.
Yeah. On the topic of the speed limit, not to be totally derail us, but just out of curiosity, from Safeway up to McDonald's, is there, is, are we considering maybe lowering the speed in that area? And has that been a topic of discussion?
I'm not aware of the conversations, those are happening with the public works director and the city managers, so I'm not privy of the details.
I just think it's silly that you hit, that we just get you to forty-five and then you've got a light right there. And I live in that neighborhood, and I hear, I mean, I hear the accidents that happen there. People are, it's a, it's a terrible, I think it was a terrible decision to make that to forty-five before. Just throwing it out there.
I think there.
In case you ever have a conversation.
Fifty-five heading down to, uh, to Walmart, so I think that should be the more.
Yeah, I mean, why don't we wait till you get out of town?
There's a master plan that the city is working on. Public Works, uh, the city manager, if you wanna find out, give David Butterby or, or Bill Osbeck a call. And there's, it's not, it's not a secret. There's a regular procedure that they're going through to try to get that lowered.
Oh.
In cooperation with CDOT.
Right, right.
There's a regular procedure they're working on. Anything else for the good of the order?
We have a work session. You can all stick around for another thirty minutes or so.
Do I have a motion to adjourn and move the work session?
So moved. Passed. Five-minute break, potty break.
Yeah, we did it. I need it.
Little potty break.
You don't sound good.
No, I'm still minty.
That's not good. For sure. Sure.
I'm gonna go home.